All right, it's 6:30. I'll call the Free Lakeville Regional School Committee for August 5th to order. Renee, can we do a roll, please?
Sure. Steve Owen?
Yes.
Jean Fox?
Yes.
Sherri Barron?
Yes.
Jen Blum is remote. Bob Clark? Laura Ramsden?
Here.
Will Sankowitz?
Here.
Steve Sylvia?
Here.
Lake Cam is recording the meeting. Anyone else recording the meeting? Seeing none, the school committee is going to do a brief executive session. Can we do a quick roll to go into executive session?
Steve Owen?
Yes.
Jean Fox?
Yes.
Sherri Barron?
Yes.
Jen Blum? Bob Clark? Laura Ramsden?
Yes.
Will Sankowitz?
Yes.
Steve Sylvia?
Yes.
Bullock, join to the cafeteria. Be back.
Thank you for your patience. We'll continue on with the rest of the agenda. Before we get into item three, I just wanted to bring up two quick points. One, this past Saturday, the district had a pretty awesome event with the high school graduation. And I think a huge kudos goes out to Dr. Starkey and her team, as well as the custodians and their team, and a slew of other people that I'm sure I'm missing of that. But to have almost a 90% participation rate is a pretty awesome feat in what is before us in this timeframe. So, great thank you to Dr. Starkey and her team for leading this. And I'm sure, thanks to you, but I'm sure you defer a lot of that to Dr. Starkey.
You were right on target by recognizing Dr. Starkey and her team. They did a phenomenal job. It was a great ceremony. And I think all families and certainly the kids appreciate it. Great event.
The next on the agenda is public participation. I know many people are interested in our school reopening plan and may have comments. I will say that as part of that agenda item, I will open for comments, but we will keep them brief, to the point. And if we will cut them off, it gets to be a point of being repetitive and insulting otherwise. So I'd ask people just to maintain the regulations that we have to abide by, but I will open up for public participation. You need to come to the mic. Please give us your name and the town and everything. That'd be great.
Sorry. Okay. Hi, my name is Renee Vitale. I'm the EAFL president. I'm not a resident, so I hope it's okay that I speak this evening. Okay. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to take a moment. As you may know, that after the administrative team had shared all three models with all of the five buildings, the EAFL Executive Board held building meetings to answer any questions, as well as to be a sounding board for our members about the process, as well as where we're all thinking for the fall and the opening. Mr. Madera shared those results with you today from the survey that we had after our meetings. And we realized that the decision that you have before you this evening is not an easy one, but one that's mandated by DESI. And while the EAFL respects the judgment of our superintendent and his administrative team, our recommendation of models differs. I believe we can all agree that none of the models is best for both academic growth and the safety of all stakeholders. And as you may have seen the results of the survey, or both results from both surveys, our members are growing increasingly concerned about the increase in numbers in Massachusetts, the United States, and throughout the world. Apparently, COVID isn't going anywhere anytime soon. So as you make the decision this evening of which model to adopt for the start of this school year, the EAFL respectfully requests you to consider adopting a remote start until such time that we can ensure the safety of all in our care. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. Anyone else for public participation?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Christine Sylvia. I am not a resident. I am the secretary at Aponequid High School. I also was a teacher at Aponequid for 10 years prior to that. So I've been a part of the district for a few years now. I'm here tonight to share a letter that my colleague Kate Bullock has written. She emailed it out to the school committee, but asked, in her absence, if I could read it in a little bit more of a public forum. Dear school committee members, I currently live in a constant state of anxiety over the decision that you're about to make regarding my fate and the fate of my family. If you vote yes to a hybrid return, I do not get to see my aging parents for an undetermined amount of time. You are voting for me to be exposed to a potentially deadly virus every week by fresh exposure to new students that have been active in their community. Research has shown that students aged 10 to 19 can spread the virus as effectively as adults. As a special education teacher at Aponequid, this data deeply concerns me. Local schools nearby are adopting a phased start, considering the health and safety of their staff, as well as their students. This affords more time to understand the effects of the coronavirus within an enclosed building. If you vote to send us to the front lines, please give us proper PPE daily and constantly monitor the air quality and flow in each building to keep us safe. But also know that this is not a return to normalcy, as many parents are imagining. I will not get within six feet of my students, per CDC guidelines, and I am not even sure of how effective a teacher I can be when every sneeze, cough, or sniffle will activate my curiosity about whether or not a student is harboring symptoms of COVID-19. Additionally, I ask, have you been instructed or afforded the opportunity to sit in a poorly ventilated, un-air-conditioned space for six hours a day, providing instruction behind a mask? Everything I learned about the virus thus far, in terms of catching it, correlates directly with the amount of time exposed within enclosed spaces. As teachers, we have zero control over who our students are spending time with in the community, yet we're being asked to sit in an experimental pandemic Petri dish with them. I believe in masks for safety. However, there are going to be students at the high school that do not agree. Enforcing this for my safety and the safety of other students is surely to be an additional demand placed on the teachers. Now let's build in mask breaks, hand washing breaks, zero group work, and six feet of distance. I assure you, none of this is going to feel normal to the staff or students. Instead of having teachers be less effective frontline workers, please consider our health and our families. Let us do work from a place that we get to control the level of exposure that we face on a daily basis. At the end of the day, we are all just trying to stay safe and alive through a pandemic. The long-term effects of COVID-19 are still unknown. I do not want to be the guinea pig that tests out how bad it can get. Please vote to let me see my parents and keep my health. Remote teaching is by no means taking an easy way out. In my 20 years of education, the last three months of the 2019-2020 school year was by far the most difficult time in my professional career. A vote for remote ensures the safety of staff and students. I will be a more effective teacher if I have confidence in my safety. That is the crux of this entire issue. Finally, teachers are held to high standards in the Free Lake School District. I will be able to do my job and do it exponentially better from the safety and security of my own home on my terms. If you vote to put my livelihood on the line every day, I cannot promise you the level of expertise that I proudly stand behind. Public offices are still closed, and therefore I believe that schools should be as well. Sincerely, Kate Bullock. And again, I want to thank Kate, she couldn't be here tonight, but for sharing that and for sharing it with all of you. Again, as a secretary, my job in the front of the building is personal. I see the kids every day. I see our community members every day, and I truly love what I do. Please give me the chance to come back safely and do that when it is right. Thank you.
Thank you. We, each one of us did receive that letter from Ms. Bullock. And she did get a response from the school committee related to that. This is not an easy decision for all of us sitting up here. And there's two phases to it. One is the safety aspect that we're looking at, and secondarily, the educational plan. I'm sure you can attest that we cannot have a repeat of what we had in the spring from an educational plan. So that is going to be a key question from the board up here. But to go back to the safety, there's a lot of things that have been put into place. And I'll go back to the original comment that we just did a graduation ceremony with 90% participation doing that. So I do have the confidence in the administration, as well as the custodial staff, to make sure that we have a safe environment. The other big piece is this board approved a pretty sizable capital improvement with some major changes to ventilation here at the main campus. That's not something that has been around any other district through that. So just to reiterate, and we said this to Ms. Bullock, safety is a big concern, and we're going to look into that. But the educational plan is also just as important to that. But I thank you for your comments. Any other for public participation?
Yes, good evening. John Karanas, Lakeville, Massachusetts, 49 Myrick Street. On the health and safety aspects, are those documents going to be public that we could take a look and read and understand, particularly the HVAC airflow and the cleaning and sanitization prior to allowing students, educators, and administrators back into the buildings?
If I heard the question right, you want to know if the documents or the methodology will be public?
Yeah, as outlined in many state documents and other federal requirements.
Correct.
They're going to be public to review. And I understand some may be in development. I understand that, but I also wouldn't use the analogy of a very successful graduation to returning back to schools and buildings. You know, it was a great graduation, but I wouldn't use that as an analogy of what's ahead.
Not a direct analogy, it's more the fact that we take the protocols and make sure that we apply them correctly. That was a key thing.
Yes, correct.
Mr. Madera, if you're wrong, all of this would be made public by the August 10th. Is that correct?
So the plan will initiate that, and then prior to the start of school, we'll follow all the guidelines as it's laid out by the state and specific to those areas as well.
Yeah, the state leaves it upon the district to develop those protocols and guidelines and guidance, but it needs to be developed by the district and implemented and evaluated and implemented at the schools, to be clear.
And I believe that is the game plan, with the first being these documents made public by the August 10th. Is that the plan?
The plan that you'll see presented, that we've shared in draft, will contain those components.
Right. And that's everything on the HVAC side, system side, and also the cleaning and disinfectant programs?
That is all part of the bullet points that need to be in those comprehensive plans.
Correct. Yeah, it's absolutely part of the document. Okay, great. And the entirety of that document will be available also? I know I'm asking about a subset.
Again, Mr. Mo, if I may, through the chair, typically through public participation, we don't engage in dialogue, we listen. But so just to be clear, I did not indicate that HVAC breakdowns in detail are going to be part of an educational plan submitted August 10th, nor did the state have those expectations. As we continue to look transparently at that, we can certainly make that available, but I don't want to mislead anybody. The document that you see there, which is...
As outlined by the state and the requirements listed in there will be the one that's made public.
Correct.
Right. But that document also asks for evaluations and assessments of those systems. So those evaluations and assessments will also be made available, correct?
If it's part of the requirement for that document, then they should be in there. That is correct.
Correct. Could I have the document you're referring to? Is that the DESE document, the outline?
There is an outline from DESE that what the comprehensive plan needs to include.
Yep, okay. We're talking the same document then.
We're talking the same document, correct?
Yeah, I believe so. It's posted actually on Free Lake's site. On the website, and then there's a consolidated short presentation. It's the same document. Okay, great. Great, thank you.
Any other? And I believe we're following the protocol, but if you could slide your mask so we can hear you clearly, it's doing that, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
I would prefer to slide my mask down. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. John Oliveri, Woodland Ridge Drive. I just have one question. In regards to the two options where there will be remote learning, full remote or hybrid, has the plan taken into consideration, and honestly, I'm not asking this for myself, I'm going to be able to figure out what to do with my children, but is there any consideration or are there any supports in place for those families that are not going to be able to have someone watch their children or take care of their children in a hybrid or a full remote? I mean, there are a number of families in this community. I don't think people realize how many there are. They're going to have to go to work. They're not going to be in a situation where they're going to turn around and say, I'm going to work remotely, or I'm going to stay home, or I'm going to take all this time off. I posed the question, what plans does the district have in place? Or are they just going to say, hey, figure it out yourself? Thank you.
Unfortunately, before I turn that over, any other response here? That's a question that everybody has to face, whether your parents are students or not. As a working professional, I have that same situation here that I need to work through as well. And I think that is a dynamic in the family that they were going to have to address. I don't believe there's going to be additional support for childcare as being handled by the district as part of these, any one of the plans that is adopted. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I would just clarify that in both the full in-person and in the hybrid model, we are presenting a before and after care program for those students that are attending that week, if it's the cohort. But I believe Mr. Oliveri's question was more global in relation, for example, remote. We don't, we have not built those in, those supports in, as we don't in full in-person in traditional settings.
Got it. So basically, unless we go back full-time, kids 100%, the families will have to figure that out themselves then, I guess?
Unfortunately, that is the, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You make a very good point, and it's one that is a statewide discussion right now. What are the supports for families that are not there? And certainly, to ask districts to come up with the resources to deal with that, it's beyond the pale. We really need to address this. Already, the data are showing that when they're staying, when kids are home and parents are trying to work from home, unfortunately, it's the women most often that are doing the lion's share. Guys are chipping in more, but there are also income implications that are very real. So this is a statewide issue that needs to be addressed, and I believe is on an upcoming agenda. I know there's some legislation out there, too.
Anybody else for public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, acceptance of minutes of July 22nd. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from July 22nd. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
There are a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion is unanimous. I'll entertain a motion for the acceptable minutes from July 29th. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Seeing none, the motion is unanimous. Item five, presentation to the school committee.
Mr. Owen, we do have multiple administrators here to present. I just want to make you aware that they do have a PowerPoint presentation. So at this time, I would respectfully ask, we're going to bring a slide down. It may be kind of, we don't want to take a formal recess, but school committee members may want to sit socially distanced in the front, a couple of rows in the auditorium. It may be a little bit easier to see that presentation. At this time, it's my privilege to introduce Assistant Principal from the high school, Andrew Davy. Assistant Principal from the middle school, Brian Olivera. And also, I believe Mr. Mackamar is in the back. Our director of technology helped facilitate this, so. Gentlemen, I'm going to turn the program over to you.
That's great, thank you. I realize they still smile with a mask on, but no one can tell. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Davy. I'm one of the assistant principals here at Aponequid Regional High School. This is Brian Olivera. He is the assistant principal at the middle school. And together with Craig Mackamar, our director of technology, we've been working on a plan to go one-to-one for grades six through 12 here in the district. It's a very exciting thing. So this is a plan that we wrote for the rollout and implementation of this program. We are using, part of this, you know, is for teachers and staff to be using some new technology. So this is my first time ever using a Prezi, which is what we're using tonight, because part of this is going to be learning for everyone. So I figured, why not start right away in the presentation? So I'm just going to go over a quick overview of the program. So it'll be for all grades from six through 12. All students will get a Chromebook to use, and they'll be able to use that for the time that they're with us. So they'll have a Chromebook for those years. It'll be provided from the district, and then we have a handbook that we've created that kind of spells out all the different things. We're going to go through some highlights of it in a minute. And also, we're offering some optional insurance to families in case of any damages or anything like that that could come up.
So looking over at some benefits of one-to-one, obviously, some of them for this time that we're in, and just in general, just kind of long-term. Increased opportunities for collaboration amongst students, obviously, with a six-feet distance. Obviously, it's a little bit difficult. It's not your normal group work, what you normally see, so the Chromebooks allow for that. Increased opportunities for differentiation and individualized learning. You can really customize what each student's getting on these devices. Fully compatible with our G Suite, which we've been using. Our students are comfortable with the program. Our teachers are pretty comfortable. Ensures the technology is available in every class, every day. Previously, we had carts, so if somebody had signed the cart out, you were kind of out of luck, and you kind of had to wait until, you know, there was one available for your class. At this point, with the one-to-ones, everybody can use one every day. It allows education to continue. Doesn't matter, obviously, which plan is voted on, and obviously, you can go in between the plans, and the technology will still be there.
So we just want to go over the process. So for distribution, as of right now, the middle school is planning on doing kind of like a drive-through night, similar to what they did for pickup of personal belongings. And then we'll have parents view a video that we're creating with all the information from the handbook, and then do a digital sign-off for the Chromebook, and then they'll drive-through. At the high school right now, we're planning on distributing on the first day for students, but we do have alternate plans that are similar to a pickup night. Part of it, the reason of waiting, is we have some kits that are being put together for different subjects and different classes. And if we're going to do a pickup night, we'd rather be not just for a Chromebook, but for kind of all the things students would need to start the year, totally make parents come out once.
And then before I get to collection, if I could comment on the distribution, obviously, the plan for this year is a little bit different than what would be an ideal situation going forward. Ideally, the original plan was to have a Chromebook night, an informational night, for the parents to come in, for the students to come in, to learn a little bit about the device, how to take care of the device, those kinds of things. So going forward next year, assuming everything's back to normal, or what point we get to that, we would have an informational night, obviously, just for the incoming sixth graders or whatever year we're starting that at. So the other years have already been through the process. For collection, the collection will occur at the end of every year. They'll be collected, cleaned, inspected, and repairs will be done as needed. The Chromebooks will remain in their assigned school for the life of the device. So the ones that are going to the middle school this year will stay there for six, seven, eight. So a student would have the same device for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, obviously returning at the end and getting it back in the fall. And then when they get to the high school, they'll be issued a new device, which will stay with them for those four years. The only wrinkle to that is the first few years, as we have a couple of older devices, which will be kind of shuffling around, between the junior and the senior class, and then back to the freshmen. So a little bit different in the beginning, but normally, the device would stay with that student from nine through 12 and six through eight.
So next, we have our different responsibilities, which are outlined in the handbook. So for students, first is to follow the acceptable use policy as put forward by the district, that they bring their device fully charged. We will have some charging capabilities in classrooms, but it's going to be easier to have students bring a fully charged Chromebook with them. Adhere to teacher expectations, and we're going to be assisting teachers with kind of the creation of those expectations, some different signage they can use of when the Chromebook should be out and open, or out and away, or out and closed, and things like that. To keep their content appropriate, to treat the device with care, and to keep the device in a case. So the district has purchased cases. We have not received those cases yet, but every student is also going to be issued a case to be able to protect their Chromebook and the investment of the district.
Looking at some of the parent guarding responsibilities, view the Chromebook orientation video, which would be in lieu of an informational night, and then digitally sign the loan agreement, which will have links to the insurance form, the technology acceptable use form, and then the Chromebook handbook as well. Review all insurance information, decide whether or not to purchase that, and then monitor student use and digital citizenship.
For insurance, so the district will be able to offer insurance that is optional for students. The insurance will cover in case of accidental incidents. So something spills on it, or something breaks, you accidentally close the Chromebook on a pen and it breaks something. If a family does not opt to get the insurance, they are responsible for the full cost of the repair. And what we have done is on the insurance information sheet, we've listed out the cost of the insurance, and then also some cost of if they would have to pay for the repairs, for the full repair. It is set up that it can be done through the unit pay link on the website, or they can pay by bringing a check in to the schools.
As Drew had mentioned, it's going to cover normal wear and tear, accidental damage, liquid spills, all those kinds of things. It wouldn't cover, obviously, malicious damage. And the question is, you know, who's deciding malicious first, unintentional? Obviously, that's a case-by-case basis, same judgment we would use on a normal behavioral case every day.
Sorry, they're quicker. And last, we have, for insurance, the cost is $30 per student for a year. And again, that covers them for any accidentals that may come up. For a family, if you have multiple students, it's just a $50 cap for a family. Sample costs, if it was a complete repair or a complete new Chromebook needed, it'd be $240. If it was a screen replacement, maybe you closed something and accidentally, that's $75. Keyboard replacement is 50, not like an individual key, but a full keyboard replacement. Touchpad, 35. So you can kind of see the benefits of the $30 as the payment as a potential in case anything were to happen.
So looking at damages and repairs, the process for reporting damages and getting those taken care of, they're going to report it immediately to the school. Obviously, the plan's a little bit different, depending on where we're full in, if we're hybrid or remote. It's a similar process for hybrid, and if we're all in, students will bring the device to the library, and the library will be really kind of the central point for that. We have a system that Craig has set up, so she'll go on, she'll log the device, she'll log the problem, she will issue out a loaner to that student. The student will keep the loaner for the duration of the repair. Craig or somebody from his team would go to that school to pick the device up and then repair it. If in full remote, damages and whatnot needed repairs are going to need to be reported to chromebookhelp@freelake.org, which will be monitored by Craig and his team, and then those devices will be picked up directly from, I think from the high school, I believe is where he's going to be out of. District-owned Chromebooks should never be taken to an outside computer service for any repairs. If no insurance is purchased, as we mentioned before, they are going to be responsible for the parts and the repairs. And repetitive or intentional damage may result in disciplinary action. So the insurance isn't necessarily a get-out-of-jail-free card if it's constant repetitive.
For repairs, repairs will be handled in-house by our IT department. In the case of a needed repair, the student will be issued, as Brian said, a loaner, so that way they're not missing any instructional time. Also, the IT department is looking at the creation of a help desk here at the high school, and having some high school students sit on that desk... and having some high school students sit on that desk to make some repairs as needed. We have students who are building their own computers at home, so we might as well have them help us out with some of the needed repairs of, you know, what they can do to help us.
And then also speaking to damages and repairs, and the question is how long will a repair take? Obviously, it depends on the severity of the damage, how many devices are coming in and whatnot. And Craig does have an optional plan that we can send those devices out if we get too backed up, if too many come in. Some next steps, program information. We have the Chromebook handbook, the technology acceptable use form, insurance information. We need to get those out to families. Teacher training, that's probably the biggest piece of this. Obviously, logistics is pretty important, but then the teacher training, it takes a lot to really to implement these, especially, I mean, we obviously had a crash course in the spring, but using them every day in your classroom is a little bit different. So we're, Drew and I are in the process of creating a website with teacher tools, where they can go on, they can log on, they can ask questions. There's helpful links, there's websites, there's tutorial videos that Drew has created, and we're going to be asking teachers to help with as they get more comfortable with this information. Maybe that, I was talking to some teachers today, they're comfortable with one certain program, they can create a video for their colleagues to go and view. And then professional development, supporting staff in the area of technology, that'll happen in the first few weeks of school and then obviously throughout the year. And it's an ongoing process, obviously, that, you know, obviously several years down the road, you're still doing this PD. And then program monitoring, that's something that came as a suggestion from the state. We're going to create and deploy various surveys throughout the year to teachers, to the community, finding out, you know, what are your needs, what are your concerns, what's working, what's not working, so we can monitor the program and obviously adjust as we go.
So that's our presentation. Are there any questions?
Mr. Owen, do you want to return to the seats and I can just have Mr. Davy and Mr. Olivera to stay right up front here?
Sure.
We can do it that way. Kind of made that little segue there.
Can we put the screen or the projector on standby again?
Yep. Thanks.
All right. It's okay.
Mr. Owen, if I may, as people come back, I thought it was a little easier to allow you to come back to your place and also that way the audience can kind of see that since they've complained. As you can see, both Mr. Davy and Mr. Olivera are a perfect example of some talented administrators that have taken on and have some tech savvy and really, really have captured this. What I, a couple of exciting pieces, and I know Ashley will speak to a little bit, grant funding for the large portion of this piece in addition to some general funding. We're excited, although it's not, it's breaking news, we are getting some additional grant monies, but we're held to that at this point until the governor actually releases the information. But what I wanted to share, and both these gentlemen can speak to it, is this document easily could have been a four-to-12 document. We're ready to roll this out at the intermediate school for fourth and fifth grade, and we're going to make some modifications with Dr. Sullivan, and maybe both gentlemen can speak to that because they've had conversations. But we knew we were going to roll this out, six to 12, so we kept it to that specific. And Drew and Brian, if you don't want to speak to that at all?
Absolutely. So we spoke with Dr. Sullivan and had her review the plan. We actually also, we forgot to mention, we did seek support and guidance with it from Mr. Higgins of the middle school and Dr. Starkey here at the high school to get their take on the plan as well. Dr. Sullivan really enjoyed the plan and in talking with her, really the only things that would have to change in the plan would just be some of the wording of six to 12. But, you know, as far as it going through the media specialists and things like that, she would want to keep that all the same, including distribution and things like that. So it would pretty much be able to seamlessly transition to add those other two grades as well.
So I don't want to put them on the spot as administrators of middle school, high school. We are absolutely expecting to roll this out regardless of the model for six to 12 at the start of the year. We may have a slight adjustment schedule as it relates. We were waiting for some potential grant monies and couldn't secure the actual devices, even though the devices have in fact been ordered for fourth and fifth grade. So there might be a little time lapse at the start of the school year in those two grades. But I just wanted to be clear, this, the handbook was able to expand even beyond the middle school and high school, and we're excited about the detail behind it. And I'm going to defer to these as experts, and I know Ashley can speak to some of the finances on questions. Thank you.
This is great. I think it's a great undertaking by the district, even regardless of the timeframe that we're in with the pandemic here. So quite different than the original version. I'm happy to see that there is a way that we can submit issues, not just picking up the phone. And I'm happy that we're, we've talked about this for a while, that potentially using some of our high school students who, I mean, no disrespect to the people up here, are probably a hell of a lot smarter in technology than we are, but these taking advantage of that piece. The only two things that I would say is let's crawl before we walk. There's a lot of things in here about what students can access and not. I think we need to probably look at approach where we're as locked down as much as possible and then we learn and we can open it up from there. I do know we have capabilities that when they're on our Wi-Fi here in the district, we can set up rules that are universal and while it's locking down the Chromebooks and only a freelake.org account can log on. So there are permissions or anything like that. I would just highly recommend that we walk, I mean crawl before we walk in that aspect there. So I have a question as far as are we standardizing the app or, you know, and I guess the key question is are we going Google Meet throughout the thing versus Zoom, or is that still yet to be determined?
I speak to that. So it's something we talked about with, I know at the middle school with curriculum leaders today, I believe we're still Zoom or Google Meet. There is a glitch with one of the new Google rollouts that Google Meet sometimes has. Craig has told us yesterday, we're pretty sure we have that fixed with Google 85, with Chrome 85, they'll have that fixed. So because there is that possibility that that might not work on every device, we do have the option that they can do Zoom or Google Meet. Zoom also has the option of Google breakout, of breakout rooms that Google Meet isn't as seamless, that they're still working on. So some of that's a little bit of teacher preference. But part of that is getting teachers and students comfortable with both of those platforms.
I just need clarification. Thank you for this. This is very informative, and I may have misunderstood, but you're showing that the insurance covers normal wear and tear. If they don't have the insurance, they're charged for normal wear and tear? How's that handled? Because, I mean, they'd have normal wear and tear even if they were in the building. I just, I'm not clear.
Sorry, I probably misspoke when I said that. The insurance is more for like the accidental insurance.
I got that, but it said it covered all of that, so I was confused. Thank you.
Yes, yes. So normal wear and tear, so as you're closing the Chromebook, one of the rubber pads may came off over, just over time.
Sure.
A key may become loose. So things like that as opposed to somebody dislodging all of the keys would not be a normal.
Right. No, I just, I saw them all in one bubble and I thought you had to have the insurance for all of that. I just want to make sure I was wrong, and I was. Good.
Sure. Thank you to the presenters and thank you to the superintendent for your leadership and vision on this and the quick ordering, because having these devices in hand in a time where they're certainly backordered and having trouble getting them into districts is quick action and it's appreciated. Should, can I assume that the existing Chromebooks that are in the buildings will be pushed down to the elementary levels and perhaps even getting closer to one-to-one or used at that level to enhance digital literacy skills?
So some of the Chromebooks are being used in the one-to-one initiative. So the carts at the high school, middle school are used as part of that. So they're not taking those, there wasn't a full buy for everyone at the middle and high school. We used what we had for resources and then looked at how many more we would need to purchase to go one-to-one. I do believe Craig has been working with Ashley about some different technology for the elementary school to add that. We've even said, you know, part of what we built in was some extras that we had that if we needed to, in like a case of remote or things like that, or students needing more Chromebooks at the elementary level, we'd be able to slide those over.
Thanks. So Mr. Sylvia, I know Mr. McAmmer is here, if I may, just to support that. So we absolutely do have some incentive to bring some devices and additional devices into the classroom at the elementary level. But to your point that Mr. Davy answered correctly, it's not that we're rolling those down because we're going to be using some of those, but we do have other devices that we've set aside.
Great.
For K to three specifically.
But there's a plan to bring them down, which is great.
Yeah. What would you say the overall reliability of these devices is?
As far as like how they hold up?
Yeah.
From everything we've heard from talking with Craig and other districts, they're pretty durable machines. They hold up really well, there's not a lot of damages that happen. And for the majority of what we're putting out there, they're new. So there's over like a thousand brand-new ones, which, you know, are really in really great shape. The other ones have all been retouched and everything like that. But from what we've heard, they do hold up really well and they are very durable machines.
And if I may, I believe Mr. Olivera comes to us with some experience with this type of, of the district.
Absolutely. So this device specifically, every few, every few years Chrome expires, they put basically an expiration on these devices so that the Chrome version that they're running will run out. So it basically forces you to buy new devices. These ones were picked because they last, I believe, seven or eight years, if I recall correctly. With proper handling and care, they should last a seven or eight years, whatever they're expected to last. So I've taught with, in my previous district, where we rolled one of these out, and like I said, as long as they're kept in the case, you're not shutting a pen in it, you're not throwing it around, the device will last. They're pretty sturdy machines. It's, we, all the teachers and administration, we all have Chromebooks and never have any problem with mine. So there's not really a lot of hardware to it, so it's pretty simple, which is the appeal to the device. So it should last quite long.
Thank you very much. I had a question about the, it sounds like there's a plan in place for the technical support piece, if there is an issue with the device itself. Is there any plan in place for support from a software perspective? If parents or students are having trouble with software, how will that be addressed?
So from the software standpoint, there's nothing really on the device besides really just the Chrome app. So part of the beginning of the school year and actually going back to last year is our students are pretty comfortable with Google Suite, with, you know, with Google Meet, with Google Docs, all those kinds of things. But it's going to be really getting all the kids up to speed this year if they haven't used them or what they've forgotten, and same with the teachers as well. I know our website, the district website, has some resources on there for parents if they're not familiar with how to use Google Meet, how to use Google Classroom, those kinds of things. But part of that will be our continued training with the Google video that we roll out for the beginning of the year or upcoming years, as the school year goes on, that we train, I guess, the community, parents, whatnot, how to go on and check your Google Classroom assignments, make sure the homework's in, all those kinds of things.
Okay. I just know that that was a piece of feedback that we got from the remote learning in the spring was that people had difficulty with that, and I think a lot of it fell on the teachers. And I hope that something is in place for families.
Thank you very much. At some point, Mr. Maderas, there's a lot of machines coming in the district, right? So I'd like to, so we're not in seven years having to figure out how to replace all these at once. What is the replacement plan? What is a replacement strategy? Because I'm sure these grants won't be around then. So we need to figure out that approach, and I'd like to understand the staffing support, right? So I don't believe there's an additional hire to support all of these. So what is the strategy as we're collecting all these over the summer and potential updates or what have you that need to be done? Not discussion for now, but at some point we will know that.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Absolutely, we can do that. He's in the background here tonight, but he certainly has been in the background as part of this process. The Director of Technology has worked closely with Mr. Olivera, Mr. Davy, and the other administrators, Craig McAmmer, to roll this out. I think what's exciting about this, regardless of the model and the decision made, at least initiated later tonight, this will hold true in all three of the models and bode well for us a future success. I know Ashley can speak a little bit to that, but we certainly can, you know, progress monitor and roll that out as we give you updates, regardless of the model outcome.
Thank you, Mr. Davy.
Great job, gentlemen. They did share with me in the hallway, I should add, that of the two of us, that they were looking forward more to their presentation, thought that I had the tougher challenge ahead, and you can see why now. So they rolled out something that we're real excited to see and regardless of the model and outcome.
Is that why they're running out of the auditorium?
They did, they took the cue correctly. They took that cue correctly.
All I saw was a bottle up in the air. I'm not sure what, but again, thank you very much. I'm sure that was an easy task.
Just a great example. I referenced Craig, but, you know, again, to Drew and Brian, these are two new administrators to the district. So, you know, not only have we attracted talented people, but we're retaining them and they've stepped right up in a leadership role and to signify, you know, I think we're in a good place moving forward relative to staffing.
Moving on to next item on the agenda, 6A FY20 budget status report.
In your packet, I've included our normal update for the budget. You can see the revenue and expenditures, and the packet is also the assessment sheet. And one thing that was added today was the estimate E and D closed for FY20. I do want to note it is an estimate to date. It's what we have projected as we sit in the office today. It looks like right now we'll have approximately $1.5 million in E and D once it's certified in October. After the projected assessment sheet, you will see the trend of E and D from FY12. You will see we have not been in this position of $1.5 million in E and D, and it's a great position to be in going into a very tough, challenging year ahead of us.
This document, if I may, if you recall, throughout the process, she's been giving you status reports as our Director of Finance, and this actually exceeds the number that we were targeting and this committee was hoping for. So obviously, in light of all the circumstances surrounding, financially, the district has put themselves in a good place in a year that we're certainly going to need to be in a good place, and certainly not only for FY21 but 22 as well.
Any questions for Ms. Loops on the FY20 budget? FY21 budget update.
Same presentation as FY20. You'll see where we stand as of July 31st. We're in a good place already. The FY21 assessment sheet is attached, and I've also included an FY21 Chapter 70 reduction. So late last week, we heard from the state that they were level funding Chapter 70. So for what that means to Freetown, Lakeville is we had a reduction of approximately $85,000 to our state aid. It's much better than we thought we were going to be in at this point. In the packet, I've shown some scenarios of what it would look like if it was reduced 10, 15, or 20%. Again, it's only $85,000. Where we stand today with the grant funding that the state has offered us and the contributions of our local member towns, I think we'll be able to support our budget going forward.
Great job, Ashley.
At the end of the FY21 documentation, I added this today, kind of on the coattails of the technology presentation. We will need to implement a technology revolving fund. This way, we can take in monies from the families for the insurance payments, and we can also pay those expenses. I've included the background, it's the same that's in the handout, the handbook that the two gentlemen prepared earlier, and I'm just looking for the vote from the school committee to establish a technology revolving fund.
I have a motion to establish a technology revolving fund for the purpose of collecting insurance payment and/or replace cost for Chromebooks.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Is this similar to other revolving funds where we are limited to only those two purposes?
Yes.
From a technology perspective? We can't use it for other technology items or anything like that? It's only towards?
So it's two offsets, the revenue coming in for parents to go out when it fixes the Chromebooks. Hopefully, at the end of the year, it should be close to zero if we are sending things out. What I'm asking for is just for the sole purpose of that. If you want me, I can look to see if we can expand it, but I'm just looking for insurance purposes.
Oh, so it does have the capability, but you're stipulating what the requirements are, and that's what we'd have to stick to? Got it. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion is unanimous? ESY summer program?
I'm going to turn to our Director of Student Services, Liz Skoll, and just to give an update to the group.
Thank you. So extended school year, our five-week extended school year remote program concludes tomorrow. We served 82 in district students. Teachers are currently preparing the end of year, end of ESY 2020, reports of activities Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion is unanimous? ESY summer program?
To our Director of Student Services, Liz Skoll, and just to give an update to the group.
Thank you. So extended school year, our five-week extended school year remote program concludes tomorrow. We served 82 in district students. Teachers are currently preparing the end of year, end of ESY 2020, reports of activities and participation and providing feedback to families. One of my goals for extended school year in light of the experience that we had in the spring was to provide a much more structured schedules for students and their families and to have as much live synchronous instruction as possible, obviously dependent on age that, you know, wasn't necessarily possible for our young pre-K students. But we did receive a lot of positive feedback that the structure and the schedule and emphasizing the more school-based synchronous part of the learning was effective. And it was a quick five weeks, but we did serve 82 students.
Any questions on the ESY summer program?
Seeing none. Reopening Free Lake Task Force update?
Ms. Don, I would respectfully request that rather than be redundant, that roll into the new business item as it relates to the model, because I'll capture the Task Force update as part of my introduction to that piece. So it won't be missed. But rather than have it disjointed, I would respectfully request that we just table the old business and it will become part of the new business conversation.
I don't believe there'd be any objection. Great. Moving on to new business, 7A staffing progress report.
So the only staffing update, I just want to make you aware, if you had an opportunity to look at our website and look at our human resources, we have actually been filling quite a few positions relative to resignations, retirements, and some typical adjustments that happen. Not every district can necessarily say that these days. And we have put ourselves in a good position. All those hires have been made at the building level. The only three postings that are out there, and there's multiple in one position, but I'll say three postings. We have a high school Portuguese language teacher that we're still looking to secure that position. When you consider that, we're potentially looking at September 15th, the start date, still 41 days out. We have a language high school teacher position. We have one special education, middle school teacher position, life skills. Actually, I received the packet from the principal today, scheduled appointment. And then we have multiple part-time custodian maintenance positions that we're looking to secure as part of our plan to provide some additional supports relative to whatever model we roll out as it relates. We're also looking at third-party vendors as far as cleaning as well. But one initiative here, and you'll see multiple positions, is the hopeful addition of some part-time custodians. So those are the only positions that are there. Nothing real earth-shattering as it relates, the positions are being filled in what has been a typical, as atypical summers, it's been a typical human resources staffing summer. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. You can go right to our school springing website and see those postings. And we seem to have attracted, I will say, I think the result of layoffs and pink slips and things that have happened in other districts have certainly attracted individuals to look at our district as not only a high-achieving district, but also a stable environment for them. So I think that helped us attract and hopefully retain some talented folks. But that's my staffing update. Unless there are any questions?
Any questions on staffing? Seeing none, maybe a little bit, do we want to wait for 7B until after 7C?
So you could technically look at the beginning, but the way you have the calendar, it is, they do kind of tie in. I think you probably want to take the model first and then take a look at the calendar as it relates to that model, depending upon your action.
That makes sense.
I mean, what I will say, just in the calendar piece, is we obviously have a current existing calendar that's been adopted. It's on our website and it's been supported. But as we look to reopening and some potential adjustments, that's what's reflected here. So I would agree. I think you almost should take the reopening model conversation. And then as a result of that conversation, hopeful action, you would take action on the calendar as well. And if I may, Ms. Don, I believe that's my cue to kind of, I do not have a PowerPoint or presentations at this point. You have a detailed packet you received. So just a little bit of background for folks that are certainly, you know, streaming in and certainly the interest level is there as it relates to all districts in the Commonwealth having to submit a plan for July 31. Every school district in the Commonwealth, and you have a copy of what was submitted, it was an electronic version, it was pretty, somewhat limited. So I just want to speak to that, just so the committee understands. It was done intentionally by the district, because the state put some parameters and limits on the number of words and the type of questions they asked. So that's what that responded to. It gave an overview of each of the models in addition to some key facets. That was the preliminary plan that was submitted on July 31 and is at your place. In addition, this evening, the more significant deadline or plan is a, they're calling it a final plan, but obviously, it's an evolving plan that can change between the start of school. But it is the August 10 document, and I believe it's somewhere in the 286 pages as it relates to all the detailed background behind the July 31. So that's an October, excuse me, an August 10 deadline, Monday, we need to submit that. And part of that submission to the state requires that the school committee take action on the calendar and the model for the reopening of the school district and make sure it's listed there, even though all the models are listed and are required because of the fluid nature and the expectation that things can change in any school district. Just a couple of highlights before I get into my, certainly my recommendation as it relates to the model. 90% of the state plans, and this comes directly from the Commissioner's conference this week with the superintendents, 90% of state plans submitted on July 31 went in as a preference to either full in-person or hybrid models. I'll repeat that again. 90% of action being taken by school committees are being presented by superintendents who are either providing the hybrid model or full in-person instructional model as the preference for the reopening start of their schools. In addition, 10 additional training days and professional development days were included. They are included in the calendar that you see in front of you. In addition, I incorporated the two previously bargained days as follow-up days a little bit later, and I'll go into the calendar. But the Commissioner did in fact reduce the number of school days for the school year of 180 to 170 for all schools in the Commonwealth, and that's reflected, with the sole purpose being that those days must be used prior to the start. So you can't kind of spread them out over the course of the year, but they had to be used prior to the start of the first day of school, no later than September 16. And you'll see that our date adheres to that. And that the training and professional development be focused on everything from educational technology to safety, health, all those necessary components, regardless of the model that's ultimately adopted by the district. The data supports, and certainly, and this is from conversations with the Commissioner, and certainly where we're hearing from the state, that the state of Massachusetts falls well below the threshold for transmission rates. We believe we have multiple safety measures in place, masks, social distancing, smaller class size on average in the hybrid, for example, of 10 students or fewer in a classroom for in-person instruction, that we certainly have built-in components such as no large gatherings or assemblies. Safety and cleanliness is going to be a key. It becomes a priority, it remains a priority, but it needs to be the first priority as it relates to what is considered to be new normal. New normal from our perspectives means new rules. And I think it's critical in those three model overviews that you saw, but also the detail behind the plans provided by each school, that you see those new rules have in mind the safety and well-being of not only the students and children, but of the staff. So the first step in the process in relation to this piece, and I emphasize that, I often, you know, would equate this to kind of the budget process. Vote is taken by the school committee, and I often say it's the first step of a process. We have 41 days in place prior to the start of school. So the documents, the more detailed document that will become public and placed on our website, and you'll have an opportunity because committee members haven't seen the document in its full entirety as it relates to each model and each plan, will be vetted out over the coming weeks as we look at potential options, as we sit down with bargaining units and our members and discuss what are some of the details in relation to the structures, the protocols, the processes that need to be in place prior to that. I've shared that in my superintendent's corner. It's contained in the superintendent's message. That's part of the components. You'll see the table of contents for the August 10 plan. It's consistent with what the state has required of each superintendent. And we obviously supplied much detail behind that. We've been very transparent in relation to all of the guidance. So almost any document that has been provided for the state in relation to requirements and guidance and procedures is on our website. We've obviously included stakeholders as it relates. And it's certainly my recommendation this evening to start the school year in Freetown Lakeville, that the school committee vote to impose a hybrid model for our students. I can speak a little bit to that. I do know Dr. Koblinski is going to speak a little bit to the educational value of the model. We are looking at a cohort A and cohort B, as I've referenced previously at task force meetings, one week on, one week off. This is kind of the term used. I tend to stay away from one week off. It's one week of in-person instruction, one week of remote learning. And that blended learning through a hybrid model, as we get to know the terminology, really is critical to the future success and the first step in the process to seeing our students return in person. Different components to that, and I'll certainly open it up to any questions from the board. For the hybrid model, though, but some significant strengths is that whole idea that we're trying to maximize having students return to in-person instruction in the safest possible way, and certainly reducing class size and reducing numbers, our sub-separate programs and our high-needs group, something that whether it be the CPAC survey or multiple surveys, demonstrated the fact that there's a grave concern relative to our most needy students, not only our special education students, but our EL students and other groups. Those students will be in part of both cohorts, so they'll be in in-person instruction. We have approximately 90 students that fall into that category out of the 400 IEP students that fall into, and it could be a couple of numbers off, and Liz will share that with her report. But the idea being that we have taken into account our most needy students to be sure that they see in-person instruction during both weeks' timeframes. There are multiple hybrid models that are out there, and certainly there are districts that are looking at that. But as I highlighted, the vast majority of schools and school committees, I literally opened my morning paper this morning, I won't reference three communities, but my morning paper, for those of you that do know, for record, I live in Rehoboth, identified three school districts and three school committees that voted the recommendation of the superintendent for a hybrid model to start their school year. That was the morning paper. Ironically, it was the morning paper with no power in Rehoboth as I came out, but at least the paper had arrived, so I did address that. So I'd be happy to answer specific questions. I think what's important to note for school committee members and certainly the audience and certainly staff, you know, we've taken into account the stakeholders. The advisory group has been just that. They've been a vehicle by which we've been able to provide town meetings and true transparency. They've been public meetings and communication. Again, I'd be remiss if I said that this is not, that this doesn't have the potential to be disruptive. And it certainly does. One of the public participation comments that related to that, that schedule, as it relates to our students. No ideal circumstance, but when you look at the three models, we did not feel as a leadership team, nor did I feel as superintendent, that full in-person instruction was the way to start our school year safely in Freetown Lakeville. That would require almost 2,900 students coming back. Again, no monument, no small task here, folks. If you look at the fact that at each of our elementary schools, we're probably talking 200 students instead of 400 at our three elementary schools, and then 350 compared to 700, we're going to be bringing half of our students back in in a real structured setting. The school plans are detailed, are comprehensive, involve all the stakeholders. And again, our students aren't coming back to school tomorrow. We are going to continue to work out this piece. The deadline that was established, and for those in the audience and certainly those that are watching, need to understand the school committee is asked to make a challenging decision, maybe earlier than they would have liked to individually, personally or professionally. But the deadline was established by the state of August 10 to do that. And so we needed to take a look at when our school committee meeting was. It happens to be on today, tonight on August 5. There have been a couple of districts that have requested a waiver of one or two days granted, 11th or 12th, and that is it. Commissioner was very clear, he would not extend the waivers beyond that timeframe. They want to see these plans. They want to make sure that in fact they meet all the requirements and components for a safe return. And as we continue to explore the data, and look, this is a data-driven piece. If adjustments need to be made, this is a fluid document, we will make those adjustments accordingly. Prior to the start, obviously, the state has built in more time for that determination, right? Originally, we had talked about starting, having our staff and students come back before Labor Day. We've expanded that all the way to September 15 in the model. And since you've given me an uninterrupted 10 or 15 minutes, I'll try to curtail it. But I tried to summarize and capture kind of the salient points, which is that it is my strong recommendation at this time as superintendent of schools, that the school committee consider a vote in action to support my decision to start the school year in a hybrid model in Freetown Lakeville for 2021. Ms. Don, I can turn to you or other board members. I can talk about the calendar a little bit later on, but.
Yeah, let's hold off on the calendar. I'd like to, just because there's two components to this. One is the safety plan, which I think is outlined. The other piece is the educational plan. I wonder if we can bring in Dr. Wills to just talk a little bit about the hybrid model. I am concerned on what you've outlined, that the off week is what we had in the spring, and I'm hoping that there's a different definition to that. So...
Dr. Koblinski absolutely can speak to the specifics and give some pros and cons to this, and she shared some of the document. I've referenced just in the off week as it's going to be a remote learning 2.0. If you've had an opportunity to look at the state remote guidance on the expectations, even in full remote instruction, it is not going to look like what it did in the spring in Freetown Lakeville, or for that matter, anywhere as it relates to what's expected.
Okay. Right. What it looked like in the spring was following DESI guidelines, which was that the remote learning would be half of the school day. In some districts, it was very loose on what we were given for guidance. So it will look very, very different this time. The hybrid model that Superintendent Maderas had chosen was the AB hybrid model, which is week one of onsite, week two of remote learning. And then Group B would flip that. They would start week one of remote learning and then week two of onsite learning. So one of the things that I wanted to share with people that this hybrid model is actually considered an innovative teaching model. There are schools across the country that are dedicated just to this blended learning hybrid model. It combines the best of both teaching and learning in that the students have an opportunity to be face-to-face with a teacher, where they can learn new material and discuss any issues, any intervention that needs to take place. And then they are given an opportunity remotely to apply what they learned and practice it with a number of different opportunities, not necessarily sitting in front of a computer. The teacher would be monitoring what she had given them the week that she was with them. And then they would do that at home, again, with her guidance and stepping in and monitoring what's happening. And then when they come back again, now they can discuss were there any issues, similar to flipped classroom model that was promoted some years before. It's very much based on that. It provides students with an integrated learning experience. It does allow them to learn at their own pace. It also allows them to individualize some of their learning, so that they're not trying to do what everyone's doing at the same time. They have access to their teacher in person that will support learning new skills, remediate any difficulties, and then they have opportunities to practice what they learned off-site using a variety of resources and tools. Now, there are pros and cons. I just want to read some of the pros. One of the biggest benefits found in hybrid learning is the flexibility of delivery. Students can get FaceTime with the help with concepts that need extra reinforcement and explanation. They have time for productive hands-on experiences, we're warranted, and then they have interaction opportunities. Teachers have the opportunity to meet face-to-face with their students to provide week-long, in-depth conversations. There were other models of hybrid learning where one week you would spend two days in class, have a break in the middle, and then two days of remote. But that wasn't the recommendation of the Department of Education, nor the recommendation of the superintendent, because it's too broken up. And as far as how this will affect families, this at least gives families an opportunity to plan week to week rather than day to day of my kids are in school today, tomorrow they're not in school. There are online teaching platforms that manage, track, and assess student learning in real time and make adjustments to lessons that keep students' learning trajectory on track. We have iReady reading and math that does that. They provide diagnostic. They will adjust the student's trajectory based on did they master this concept or not. And then again, the teacher has an opportunity to see them face-to-face and go over what happened. Students learning can be personalized, allowing them to work at their own pace. They can go back to review online teacher lessons, practice new material taught. It increases accessibility for students, students giving tools to access cost materials anytime and anywhere. It marries well with our whole one-to-one computer devices that are going to be distributed to. And one of the cons is that it is a strong technological dependence. But I think as a district, you've mitigated a lot of that problem. For other districts, it is a problem, but the tech resources and tools need to be reliable and easy to use. So as you heard from Mr. Davey and Mr. Olivera, there is a plan now being fleshed out that will address reliability, easy to use, something that parents can access if they have questions. will address reliability, easy to use, something that parents can access if they have questions. And again, lack of IT knowledge is also a con, however, that is something that as a district and as an admin team, we are now in the process of developing. As Superintendent Maderas said, in the next 30 days, we will start digging into specifics on these plans, knowing, you know, the parent surveys did indicate that parents needed support for this, they didn't think it should come from teachers, neither did we. At the time, there wasn't a whole lot in place to help that out, but we've learned a lot from what happened in the spring, and we know now who our tech support people are, who our in-house people are, and we're starting to develop plans that will address any issues that had come up in the spring to make this a stronger program moving forward. Another con, but also could be a pro, is that it limits the number of students in a group or a classroom, but now the teacher is sitting in front of 10, possibly 12 students instead of 24. There's a lot of good, deep learning and remediation that can occur with a classroom that size, and then allow them to go out and apply that learning. Another con is keeping students engaged at home for entire week of distance learning. So that's going to be a big one for everybody to address as far as keeping kids motivated, motivational techniques, tools and tips for parents to keep their students on track and working. This model does definitely rely on parents a lot and their support as a learning partner with the community, so that that could be either a pro or a con for the parents. But the other thing that I wanted to address was the professional development that would support this kind of a learning model. So this year, our PD goal is to create a consistent platform for online learning and blended learning. We want to create a uniform level of competency with all the staff. So we had addressed, Mr. Davey and Mr. Olivera had talked about Google. So Google Suite is what we use here in Freetown Lakeville and what the teachers and the students are most familiar with, but to varying degrees. So we have contracted with a consultant who will start creating PD opportunities for us so that teachers across the district are using all the components in Google Suite, they know how to use Google Suite. Every student K to 12 will have a Google account so they can access that. We are also in the process of using the website that Mr. Davey and Mr. Olivera are in the process of creating, so that there are some parent support videos there. We also had talked as an administrative team with principals about using like PTO time to provide opportunities for parents to either virtually or if we're able to onsite, have consultants and come in and take them through how this is going and what kind of development, professional development, even that they think that they need to support their students. The other thing we'll do is embed into our lessons that students will learn in a deeper way, how to use all the components of Google. And this is going to be ongoing for the whole year. However, the first week of professional development, which is the week of August 31st to September 4th, I had given you an outline of what we were planning for virtual PD sessions with ed tech teacher, which will definitely take us through the components of online learning, remote learning, and how to create lessons and what capacity in Google you would use to create these lessons. And then the second week, September 8th to the 11th, and then that following Monday, which is the other five of the 10 days, we will be working with an agency specifically on blended learning, the blended learning model, what are best practices in remote learning, creating two-week teaching cycles so that teachers know how to create lessons that are aligned with, students are in front of them, and now what happens the following week when they're learning remotely, and then when they cycle back to you, what are you doing there? So it's a pretty thorough step-by-step process. Those will run simultaneously, and those will also continue this year and into next because it is a good model for instruction, even if it's full return to school. And with all of the investment that you've made in Chromebooks, it's definitely worth teachers being very well-versed in how to teach using blended learning instructional practices and techniques.
No, I guess...
Go ahead.
Sorry, Sheri. Just a comment, thank you so much for this report, Dr. Blinsky. It's very, very thorough, and I think the district, along with districts across Massachusetts, took a lot of slack for what the spring looked like remotely, and I think we have to remember that we were kind of acting out of survival during that time period. So in looking at these materials and especially the professional development plan, I'm super psyched that you guys, the district, is taking these steps to really prepare our staff for what that's going to look like. So thank you so much for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Karen?
So I too want to thank you. I'm disappointed we're not going back all-in, full-time. I'm concerned about hybrid, and so I've spent the last couple of weeks, I think, probably like the rest of us, immersing ourselves in everything we possibly can find. I've done a lot of studies, we received some emails that were very heartfelt, and wanted to see what I could do to solve some of these situations that are out there. We talked about this at the last meeting, the American Pediatric Association has said to us that children need to be back in school, they need it for their social, they need it for their emotional, they need it for their physical, obesity is on its way up. I think that it saddens me to think that we have children at home in what I call fearful isolation because of this disease. It's just not healthy for kids. The other side of it is, I don't think any teacher would disagree with me that the first few weeks of school are paramount in forming relationships, getting to know each other, reconnecting with friends and meeting new friends, setting boundaries, getting structures together. I mean, there is no more important time in my mind than the month of September. So to think that we can go back, even though it's hybrid, I think is very healthy for everyone, to tell you the truth. That being said, the virus is certainly concerning to all of us. And so I have been reading everything you've been putting out about the six-foot, the desks and the safety precautions that the district has been working on. I think that we've done a really good job starting with that, we've got lots of PPEs coming. I've listened to a lot of people, parents, who say that they are satisfied and they trust us, that we can do the right thing. Today, 2:30 this afternoon, I had a meeting with Fire Chief O'Brien in Lakeville. I had met with the Board of Salkman, eh, Board of Sluckman yesterday, and I heard some information that I thought was important, but I wanted to go right to the chief. He told me that there were no new cases whatsoever of coronavirus in Lakeville in the last three weeks, and less than five in the last six weeks. So that really put me at ease. Although he couldn't tell me about Freetown, he said he felt as though it was very similar, very low. I checked out Berkeley when I got home, that too is low. I think that we have greater risks of not bringing our kids back hybrid if we don't bring our kids back hybrid. And when you look at what is happening right now in our area at least, if the six-foot safety precautions aren't enough to bring our kids back to school in a state that is still very low numbers, and we have not had one death of any child in the state of Massachusetts under the age of 18, and as Chief O'Brien said to me, and he has not transported any children by ambulance of COVID since last March, if this isn't the time to bring our kids back to hybrid, I honestly don't know when they will, when everybody will feel safe, because the people are telling us it's safe out there. The doctors are telling us this, the ambulance drivers are telling us this, the fire chiefs are telling us this. So I'm really, I'm really excited that we're coming back at least half hybrid. Hybrid halftime.
Any other questions or...
I know in speaking with a town representative in Freetown, I don't think that it's great that in Lakeville, 0% right now. I think that number in Freetown is a little bit more concerning, the number I received from a town official today is 3.94%. So I think we just have to be careful, and I am in favor of coming back remotely, but I would really, really appreciate just weekly updates if possible, just regarding that kind of transmission percentage in both towns, and if it does start to creep up, which unfortunately I'm, I think it's going to, right? To really just give the superintendent the latitude to make the next decision, which would be fully remote in my mind. But I do think as of right now, with 41 days till the first day of school, looking at this as a snapshot of where we currently are, I think hybrid is the best bet. But I really would just urge the superintendent just to keep us in the loop, which he always has. So I just think the picture's a little bit different in Freetown right now than Lakeville. I still think we're in a good spot as a region, but just something to keep an eye on.
I don't think she said 0%, but you may want to clarify...
I didn't say 0%, I said we have not had a new case in Lakeville for three weeks. And only a handful in the last six weeks. I also checked the hospitals, Morton Hospital, St. Anne's, Charlton, name another one close by, folks. I don't know if I did St. Luke's. And there were less than five people hospitalized right now of COVID, according to, and I'm getting all my statistics from mass.gov/dashboardcovid19, which if you haven't seen that, it's an amazing site, and I've been following it for weeks. It updates every day. I feel as though we really need to be cautious of where we get our information because the meteor sometimes is making all of us very anxious. So that's why I went straight to the sources. And I agree with you, I think we probably might see a spike. I hope we don't, but I think we might, and in that case, we have met our kids, our teachers have made their relationships, they get to know each other. If we have to shut down, then we have to shut up.
Maderas?
A good segue, if I may, Sheri, just so the community hears and the committee, the committee's taken a snapshot of where we're at prior to August 10th in relation to the data and my supporting a hybrid model. Understand the state was very clear, they didn't want us to submit one model, they wanted this to be the continuum, they wanted to see what in-person, full in-person instruction would be. The hybrid is that blend of in-person and remote, and then be prepared. So in your detailed packet, is the rollout where we can make adjustments as it relates to the data that's driving this as we look at safety, health of our staff and students, and make sure that the environment is in place. From all of those parameters and those metrics right now, I'm recommending, and it sounds like supported by the school committee tonight, an action that many school districts are taking right now, and we'll make those necessary adjustments. We're going to err on the side of caution in relation to this, and we have time to see that, and if adjustments are made, first of all, I have confidence in the state and even our higher officials, whether it be the governor or commissioner, right? If we see dramatic changes in the statistics and numbers, I'm not so sure it's going to be a local decision, right? I think like what happened in the spring, we may be, and we're prepared for that now, right? We're in a much better situation in relation to how we're going to address learning and education for our students in all three models. The model that I'm proposing is a combination, it allows for some in-face, in-person instruction, it allows for those relationships to be built with multiple safeguards in place. The next step in the process, if action is taken tonight from the board, with all due respect to the board, and I've shared it with the superintendent's corner, is to then meet with my employees and other groups and be sure that we're all on the same page in relation to things maybe we're missing or need to put in place between now and September 15th. President of the Association is out here and spoke earlier, Renee, representing the groups. We have a great relationship, administration and association. They were part of this process, and they voiced their concerns in relation to kind of where we're at, and I respect that. I respect the individuals' rights, but as we look at where we're at for Freetown Lakeville and take the noise out of the media and the politics of it, the decision to have our students return safely in a hybrid model makes sense today, and it makes sense moving forward. So I certainly support that, I can answer questions. I do know one question that came up from board members last time, and I think Will and maybe Steve asked it, that I just want to speak to. There will be components built in for those parents who are not comfortable, whether it be from a medical perspective or health perspective, to see their students return. Dr. Blinsky and I actually sat in on a state Zoom conference today, just focusing on what options will be available, and we'll be rolling that out in the coming weeks, such as obviously some things that are already in place, homeschooling and virtual schools, but also combination of district and virtual options that are now available, that the state has made available to us for those individuals. We think it's a small percentage, but we want to be sure we're prepared, and I know a couple of board members had concerns that in fact, if we go to in-person, what options will be available, there will absolutely be options available to those families. Obviously, we're going to promote and want to see the cohorts A to K and L to Z and see our kids back in, but we'll make some exceptions, and I'll just note, for example, the family exception, we're not going to break up families as it relates, so if you have a family with a different last name, principals know, we're going to be looking at that, and we'll make those adjustments so those families aren't on different schedules with multiple children, which is, you know, a common place. But I just wanted to try to highlight, I know it's a whole lot of information to digest, but try to touch upon some things I think that the community is sensitive to.
Stink with you had a follow-up question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, I appreciate hearing that. And just another thing, just to throw on the table, and it might be worth trying to research as a district, is maybe having some option for families that really do have those hardships as far as leaving their students at home, being able to maybe provide in-face options for a limited amount of kids, I think are most neediest and fragile learners as well. I think that would be a solid plan to just research if there's a way to be able to get that certain population in the building face-to-face.
Yes, so that, I couldn't agree more. It's that balancing act of safeguards and safety and social distancing and keeping the cohorts, but absolutely taking into account, I've had that question asked, which is can I be part of both cohorts? Well, that kind of defeats the purpose, and in-person full-face would be the way I'd roll that out, right? If we had all the safeguards in place and we felt comfortable, I'd be here tonight saying we should be looking at full in-person model. We're not there yet, but Will brought up a point that I think is well-taken. Certainly, there may be some unique circumstances, and we're not taking anything off the table as it relates to meeting the needs, but we are sensitive, and I think it's important beyond the educational value, we can't drive this based on childcare, and that's not said to neglect the fact that I spoke to at my last task force meeting, and I've shared this anecdotally, two parents, two young parents, I guess I start off everything now by saying young compared to myself as an administrator, but I'm a parent of two, who came up, didn't ask a question at the open forum, and afterwards said, "I understand what you're trying to do, I don't know how we're going to swing this with students in half." And they said, "Please don't go remote, because then, you know, we still have to work and that, there's no contact." But the hybrid could be a struggle, and you could see the passion. This is an emotion, if, listen, if you're not emotional about sending our kids back and our staff back to school, then, you know, let me, let's get the nurse in, let's check your pulse, right? I mean, you need to be passionate, I don't personal, I don't take it personally, but what I will say is, if we are at any stage of this process not comfortable with this model prior to September 15th or after, you'll hear it from me loud and clear, I know supported by this board, and I think it's important to note that, that there's a process in place.
Ms. Fox?
I'm glad earlier that you mentioned it's, the students, very important for the students to get, to be with each other, but we have staff too with very legitimate concerns. And the only other point I want to make here is that, congratulations, Lakeville, super job with the controlling the virus. job with the controlling the virus. Fewer kudos go to Freetown, but you know, it's not horrific. But we don't live in the vacuum of Freetown and Lakeville. People work elsewhere, people commute from elsewhere. So as we look at this, and I think weekly minimum, we need to look at the data, we need to study it. New Bedford is not doing well, they're not going to be in school. Boston's doing terribly, they're not going to be in school. I commute to Boston periodically and, and I, well, very periodically now, but, but I just, I want us to be vigilant. This is wonderful that we can put these safeguards in place and try to do the right thing for our kids and also hopefully for our faculty and staff, but we need to look beyond Freetown and Lakeville. This is not a vacuum. We are part of a Commonwealth and we all go all over it. That's my only point.
I think to your point, families make their own decisions as far as what they're doing and some have gone to extracurricular activities, what have you. So they've all made the decision one way or another. It will be important that this district, to use the word diligent, the protocol's in place for what we need to do, which if we ever have to get to that point where everybody is full remote, that 100% remote program needs to be rock solid, right? And that's, that's going to be a big concern from my perspective, and I think everyone else shares that. Looks like hybrid model to start, but that remote option needs to be rock solid across the board in that case. So that is going to be a key thing. Seeing some of these now raises some questions, and I think we just need to really button those up. But the protocol for us switching the model at some point, whether the state comes down and says it, or the data dictates that we need to do it, that's going to be a key thing that we need to really have in place.
Agreed.
But I will implore that across the board, families need to make that decision and be comfortable with it, especially it's in here and in the, the presentations you've made, any signs of being sick, regardless of symptoms, we keep them home, right? And I think that's something that we need to change our strategy from a family perspective as well.
Thanks. Thanks to the superintendent for an emphasis on safety and then coming back to making a recommendation that has options within your recommendation for families making the choice to go full remote. Can you map out kind of a timeline for outside of what the state requires for the submission of the comprehensive plan where parents would have to make a commitment? Or kind of speak to what parents can expect for sizes of cohorts and your ability to space that within the six-foot distance?
Yeah, multiple questions there. So just in general speaking, we've already identified cohorts within classrooms at the elementary level and secondary level. I think Pat even referenced in the conversation, we're talking about a 10 to 12 range in number of students in a classroom, right? A typical elementary class is about the class size of 22, which this school committee has really supported. So you figure 11 of those students. I'm not saying everything's going to be clear-cut in relation to that, but in general, the, the numbers are, you're talking 10 to 12 range, it may be nine, it's not going to be 13. We typically don't have classes of 26, so you're not going to see that on that end. But you could see nine or 10 students and depending upon a student being out in the protocols, because the protocols are pretty strict. So that's, that's in response to what our district will look like with our two cohorts from a number perspective and parents right now in the community can know. If they fall within the alphabet of A to K, they're going to be in that A group. So in this calendar, hopefully is adopted by you, you could start begin thinking about what the schedule's going to look like. It's only mapped out, and we'll, I know we're going to talk about that potentially later, for the first eight weeks, it's done intentionally, so we can revisit this on a daily and weekly basis. Steve, you asked about the cohort, but your other question was in relation to the specifics of, sorry.
The timeline for parents to make.
The timeline, yeah. So, so I, I've been real hesitant and reminded my principals, let's wait until a model is adopted because there's just a lot of conversations. So based on what transpires tonight, hopefully action taken by this board, which is required in a calendar, we would then be able to start rolling out information relative to transportation, what options are available, the new form, are they going to be providing their own transportation? In addition to timelines as it relates to students, potentially in families having other options to them, right? So if the hybrid model is adopted tonight and presented to the state, in addition to their review, by the way, because they're taking a look at our plan to be sure it has all the necessary components, families would then need to respond and we would give a timeframe of, you know, a 10-day to two-week time window where they can get back to us as far as a family decision as it relates to medical concerns that they may have, health, health risks and/or just from a, you know, a comfort level perspective. But I, I have not put a date in place as it relates to that. The plan is officially submitted on Monday, the 10th. If you had to ask me and put me on the spot, I would say the 24th, you could start circling that timeframe of that two-week window. It would allow us to make some necessary adjustments relative to plans. It would allow, it also allows us some time to roll out some, what some of those options are. For example, it's a family that chooses to do that, and I think the percentages are going to be small, but they need, they need to be there. What options are available to them and then what's the required form that we're asking them to submit in relation? I, I think that, to answer your question, it's kind of a long way, but probably a two-week window of the 10th to the 24th, we really need to iron that out relative to bus routes. As, as all of you know, the bus guidance was pretty specific, right? We cannot put more than 24 students on a bus. So we need to be sure, in fact, if we have families that are committed to transporting their child for the first phase is how we're going to look at it, the first phase of the school year. They're not committing to the transporting their child for the entire year, but we're going to ask them that they need to make a commitment based on the new calendar to that timeframe so we can determine. And I think a lot of families, I have to be honest, a lot of parents have already anecdotally reached out to me saying, you know, I'll check that off in the form. We've actually already tweaked the transportation form, which has always been like a bus change form to indicate providing their own transportation. Because keep in mind, at each of our schools, we're going to have to build in different dismissal and arrival schedules as it relates to safety and health. For example, it was not uncommon for schools, including ours, to had group all the kids together, right, for pickup and, and drop-off. Well, that, that clearly is not a safeguard that we can have in place in addition to staggering when the buses and those drop-offs are. So Steve, to your point, it's critical that we give them what we, what is appropriate, it's an aggressive window in fairness, right? They're making some tough decisions, but we don't have, even though we, we talked about a long period of time, 41 days, we don't have an infinite, infinite number of days to, to address that. So I'm thinking by the end of August, we'll roll out bus routes, first of all, right? We'll let people know where their bus routes are, they'll know what cohort they're in, they'll start identifying kind of where they want, they're going to provide their own transportation, make some determination. In some instances, it even, even may opt out of the model, what options are available, who to submit that to, all of that's going to be outlined. In addition to the school principals kind of doing their thing and updating parents at each level on some of the detail. I know as detailed and as comprehensive as you think that plan is, that only just touches upon the detail that has to happen at each of the schools, right? Those 18 to 20 documents. I will say the state has done a phenomenal job relative to safety protocols, right? There is no gray area. You know, some even administrators and educators, if there is, if there are instances or there are concerns, there's not going to be a lot of really vague questions. Got to adhere to the strict protocols. And in fact, you'll see the principals included those protocols because we know that's so important for families to feel comfortable about seeing their kids return to our schools. I'm confident that we have what's in place. Again, what I don't, what I think it's important is, and the question came up in public participation, every answer that parents, or every question that parents have is not going to be answered in that, that document, right? I mean, that's, it is a evolving document that kickstarts based on what model we choose, where we need to be, hopefully if our students return on September 15th.
And just further on that, I think that the firm of the numbers are in terms of commitments or, or choice for the options, that may give you flexibility with families to accommodate families that fall outside of the alphabet or need to be together for certain circumstances or hardships.
We can, yeah, we can potentially look at some, some discussion in relation to, based on what the, where those numbers stand. In addition to, to keep in mind, and we haven't touched upon it, what staff needs, right? We got to take a look at where our staff is at and as it relates to, and Renee provided that survey, delivery of instruction, you know, and, and each of the models and make some adjustments where necessary for individuals there too.
Just to try to bring it, it's a comprehensive plan as far as the safety piece. I think the next step is what is the educational piece behind this, especially the 100% remote? Because we'll have to go to that. The key thing is what is that K to five? Because even when the K to five is home, even if we went 100% remote, that cohort, lacrobetta word, has its own challenges, right? And, and that's why it's going to be really key for in here for the 10th, what that plan looks like, because that's.
Again, Steve, just for parents to understand, it's going to be the roadmap to the detail behind that has to happen with professional development. And, and you'll see it's, it's comprehensive. Again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we're going to end up in remote. I know that was kind of referenced, I, I think we could.
But we should be prepared for it.
Yeah, all, all three models absolutely reflect that preparedness.
I just don't want to get away from the safety conversation, but just a question on the week off or the, the week that they're home and the asynchronous piece, would there be, what would it be in terms of teacher contact during that week?
It's actually, and so in the detailed plans, you'll actually see hours listed out there and schedules and modifications. There, there is some flexibility as it relates to that piece though, Steve, so some of it could be live, you know, and some of that needs to be, you know, we needed some flexibility for families that can't be on a stringent schedule. Not everybody can be there at nine o'clock that's home for childcare reasons. And so both of those things are in place, you'll see that reflected in each of the plans. It varies a little bit from, from grade level to grade level as well, obviously because of the age of the children. You, you've hit upon, you know, the K to five piece is critical, that elementary aspect and, and the need or the reliance on, on adults in the home to help provide some structure is critical. But I, I just keep reminding people that what, what they experienced in, in the spring is not what's being rolled out as it relates to the remote aspect of learning, both in the hybrid and the full remote, if that's where it needs to be, right? We learn from that and I think in addition, the state expectations is very clear. State, schools that are, that are rolling out a remote, and it's a small percentage right now, that could change, are, are being reminded by the commissioner in our conference calls, and I have another one tomorrow, that the accountability and the expectations for a full day of learning and your employees showing up to work and teach from their classrooms are some of the things they're looking for from a remote model, from districts.
Mr. Clark.
I mean, it's important to say that this document is evolving, and I, I think it was Fauci that said, the knowledge of COVID is evolving. I mean, if you back up 41, 41 days ago, that's a lot different than what, what we know today. And when school starts, there's probably more information that would cause this document to be changed or altered in some way. So you don't know where you're going with this. I, I got my predictions, but I'm not going to state them at this time. But I look at Major League Baseball and stuff like that and I, I don't, I don't know. But this document would probably change based on the ever-changing knowledge that's, that's coming down the line. So you got to realize that this is not cotton and stone.
Obviously, I'm only one person on, on the committee, but as a committee, do we feel, can we request that the superintendent does provide us with, with those percentages weekly just so we can try to just gauge which way the data is going and the numbers are going? I know he's.
I just, I just want to clarify, when you ask numbers, what, what numbers specifically?
The town number?
The town, of the towns, yes. Yep, of both towns. I think that would offer, I mean, not that you're not already doing this, Rick, I know that you are, but I think just reaching out to both towns on a monthly basis, both boards of health, and being able to just relay that information to us to be able to have an informed decision as kind of things go on here, would be great from, from my point of view. And you've always been super in, in really keeping us up to date, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, but I, I definitely can do that. And, and Sherry referenced, most of the counties and towns are required to do so and the state's been, been putting those numbers out, but I certainly can do that.
I appreciate that.
I like that idea too, Will, but I'm more interested in the actual numbers rather than the percentages. I'm not sure that people understand the percentages. Sometimes I'm not sure that I understand the percentages, but I understand the numbers. I'm also wondering if maybe Rick could just check that every week for us and let us know what's happening through email, just to the committee. Is that asking too much of you, Rick?
Oh, no, I absolutely will, will supply that.
Just the numbers.
Ms. Ramsey.
Thank you to you, Rick, and the entire administrative team for all of the work that has gone into this, because I work in another district and I know how much goes into this. So I, I thank you very much. I just had a question about the curriculum itself and the hybrid model. Is the intention that the students that are face-to-face in the classroom will have the same instruction? So each cohort will have the same instruction on the same subject matter?
Yes, absolutely. And the district has already purchased online licenses to go to some of your concerns, Mr. Owen, in each subject area that will support the learning on-site when they're off-site.
Any other questions?
I will, I'll entertain a motion to support the superintendent's model of a hybrid based upon the information we have tonight, knowing that this is continuing to be evolved in that model. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion is unanimous. Just a housekeeping, I think that also checks off 6D, the task force update, or do you have any information you for that?
Correct. We do have an additional town hall meeting scheduled for Monday. I'm looking at some adjustments in relative, it's scheduled, we've been transparent in trying to have auditorium meetings, but we're trying to also be cognizant of the restrictions of 25 individuals. So that may in fact be remote Monday, but we do have an additional meeting scheduled. But other than that, we captured it in, in the conversation here tonight. Certainly the document that's going to be provided to the state will be available for the entire community, not just the task force, as it relates to the details behind what you have in front of you.
Moving on to 7C, the, I'm sorry, 7B, the school calendar.
So in your packet, I provided you the, the current 180 school day calendar that was voted on. I believe we made an adjustment in June. I have a proposed calendar that now reflects 170 school days for students, color-coded in a hybrid model. And it's been revised through, from August through October for a start date of September 15th. You'll see a color-coded A to K for cohort A and L to Z for group B. We have built in those 10 training days, professional development days for safety, health and educational value for our staff members, beginning on August 31st through Monday, September 14th. We have built in the cohorts, we've shared an abbreviated cohort that first week, so all the students will at least have two days to kind of kick off the start of their school and not feel there was a large lapse. And then we've actually taken advantage of two additional professional development days that were part of our contract when you work 172 days. And so we've built them in those, on those Mondays. And that's going to allow staff, it's going to allow for facility maintenance as well and preparing for the next cohort to come in, but also to have our staff take a look at how the, how the hybrid model is working. We've built it out projecting through the first eight weeks. And certainly there is no obligation or expectation, just like any decision that I make relative to a school closure or adjustments that need to be made, we can make it regardless. But we wanted to kind of show from a scheduling perspective for parents, if we remain in the hybrid model, what that would look like with in-person instruction versus remote learning during that timeframe. So we've worked it from September 15th through Friday, November 6th. Adjustments can be made, but it would be my recommendation that the school committee, which has already now endorsed the hybrid model, endorse this new calendar. It will allow over a month of, of planning to begin as families start to look at the details behind decisions that they need to make relative to all the components we talked about. I'd be happy to answer specific questions. Did make one adjustment to a state holiday, that was added in June, for example, but you know, we don't really need to talk about June right now, considering, let's, let's start off the opening, but it was an opportunity to make an adjustment that needed to be made. So I'd be happy to answer specific questions.
First four days of school, what is the expectation of cohort B on the, the 8th and 9th?
So, so they're not, it's not the 8th and 9th?
I'm sorry, the 15th and 16th.
So the first, the first cohort would be A, they would come in in the first two days, and then cohort B would be Thursday and Friday. So the same expectations would exist. So the same expectations would exist as an opening of in-person and face-to-face, you know, to what Sherry and others shared. I mean, it's an orientation. They are full days of school, they're not abbreviated, but it's an orientation to coming back, and it's the child's first day coming back to us.
So I'm talking about the other cohort. So B is, what is B doing on the first two days of school?
So the model would fall right into place. They would engage in remote learning during that timeframe.
So they would have assignments delivered to them for the first?
We're going to have to build in orientation for those students, yes. The expectation is that, to answer your question, A's in, are the B kids waiting for their time? No, no. The model is built in that simultaneously we're providing. And I just use the example from a numbers perspective of 20 students, right? 22 students. 10 or 11 students are in front of the staff member. We didn't feel it was, in that first week especially, to get the true nature of coming back to school face-to-face, that we should have the Cohort A go those four days and then wait a timeframe.
Totally get that. I just want to make sure we're setting the expectation of what that first two days are not.
So September 15th, let me be clear, and I'll tell you what the state would tell us. September 15th is the first day of school for every student in the district.
With that, we typically break out kindergarten start, but everybody, same way, it's just K to 12 is Group A, Group B, as you have it here.
That's correct. So we typically also identify when preschool and kindergarten start. That's not noted here. That's something that doesn't require a vote on your piece. We're looking at it. We had to push back screening to the fall. And as it relates to those 10 PD days, we had scheduled our fall kindergarten screening, preschool screening during the 10 days prior to the state imposing or putting those trainings in place. So we may have to alter or push our preschool and kindergarten back. Typically, if you just follow what we've always done, where we're starting on the 15th, 16th, and 17th kindergarten and preschool start the following week. It's not stated there because that's still to be determined, but it will be, it will be obviously presented to families.
Yeah, because they're asking that same question there, so. And then my only other question before.
Again, keep in mind, those families will be coming in in person because we have the face-to-face preschool screening.
With all the professional development in September, do we need to do the curriculum day on the 9th of October so soon? Or is that something that could be moved later to address that? And I think, you know, you could probably tackle that, but I just put that out there.
We didn't. I think that's going to be a worthy conversation with the association as it relates to professional development, Steve. I would respectfully request we keep it as a placeholder. Even those two days, they did not have the opportunity. I'm trying to front-load in light of the uniqueness of this to provide some professional development for our staff. I'll certainly bring it back. Keep in mind, the school committee does have another meeting prior to the start of school, August 26th. So if we had to make an adjustment, and I've been able to meet with groups and we felt that we could move that day, I'll bring that back. And I don't think it significantly changes the impact on families as it relates to.
Thank you.
Ms. Perrin.
I see the school committee meets on the 12th. That'll be next Wednesday, is that true?
No, we made that adjustment. So that calendar reflected the original piece. We didn't adjust it for the 5th here. The meeting on the 12th is actually tonight's meeting.
Thank you. And the September and October meetings will be called as needed by the school committee members, by the school committee chair. Yeah, there are no school committee meetings noted here, but maybe we need that to just be fluid, too.
I think that was a color coding piece as it relates, they exist.
So look at this. We have a meeting, look at the comparison one. We'll have a, September 23rd is the school committee meeting and October 14th is the school committee meeting.
So in fairness, and Renee won't say this, but I'll say this. I told her to prioritize the student days in this calendar, not the school committee dates, and as a result, they didn't appear on this piece.
And that's right, the students.
We do have scheduled meetings on the 23rd and September. If you certainly refer to the previous one in October as well.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? And I'm assuming we'll probably get another one updated this on the 26th based upon discussions or what have you.
Well, based on your action, and we can even, and we'll even adjust, Sherry, to your point, we can make that adjustment on the 12th, for example, just so people don't anticipate the meeting next week, the 5th.
Rick, one thing I do want to make sure that we take in consideration, I'm sure you have, but whatever model we go with, the hybrid, we're going to come up with a plan for the free and reduced lunch, similar to what we did in the spring. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, so food service is a huge component. There's a kind of a placeholder in that plan. But just, and I just, with the magnitude of the pages that you see there, every detail has not been worked out. My conversation with the food service director yesterday, as a matter of fact, in an email was just about the fact that we're really going to rely and encourage families to use the technology, right, without the exchange of funds and so forth. So we'll certainly incorporate that in, and we have components. I do know she's meeting with all the principals, I believe, this week and next week in relation to some of the detail. We do intend to use both classrooms and our cafeteria space as it relates to safeguards within the hybrid. I mean, we benefit, obviously, coming from a hybrid model, that we don't have the sheer numbers for students. But to answer your question, Mr. Owen, that will absolutely be information that will be shared with families.
Good. Moving on to 8A, I'm sure we stole all of your thunder, Ms. Loeb. 8B, Dr. Koblinsky, anything else from Director?
She kind of actually covered hers, right? Pat, do you have anything?
I did, yeah.
And is that the same for you, Ms. Carlin?
No, I just had two additional items.
Great.
And I can be brief. In terms of the reentry planning for special education, the district is waiting for some final pieces with regard to student populations that were reported to be coming to the district. So we are expecting those any day now. And that will culminate, finalize the plan, which is due on August 10th. I did want to let you know, in terms of just the numbers, like Mr. Madeira said, it's going to be about 25% of students returning based on the state criteria for full-time, no week in remote learning time during this initial timeframe. The state has us looking at time spent out of the general ed classroom and designation of high-need students. They've also included in that ELL students who also are duly labeled with a special education category, homeless, foster care, students in group home, and aggregate care. So really a recognition that this is our vulnerable population, that we want to bring these students back in for as much as possible. So that will be forthcoming. There is also been a survey of parents for transportation, planning for our vans, which is going to be a key part for us as well, and getting feedback and data for transportation as well. Lastly, the CPAC, I did attach CPAC survey results based on a survey that they drafted and surveyed about experiences during remote learning in the spring. So I know that was shared previously as well, but I did submit the summary for your review tonight.
In addition to special education services, there's, I just provided a memo from Dr. Heimbecker relative to the expansion of South Coast Collaborative with Westport and New Bradford being accepted as members.
And I do apologize, I never opened it for any questions for any of the director reports. If anybody has any questions for Slope, Dr. Koblinsky, Ms. Carlin. Seeing none, any other business come before this meeting? Upcoming dates, we do have the August 26th school committee meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:46.
So moved.
I have a motion.
My name is Suzanne Decker from Village Road. I have two children in the district, and I apologize, this is my first meeting. And so I was not aware that participation was at the beginning for all discussion.
Can you just take down your?
Oh, I'm so sorry, sorry.
Sorry, thank you.
So I'm sorry. So I sat there thinking that after the discussion, there would be participation, and I apologize. I should have been here at a meeting prior to this. I will now. But I think I have a few questions or things. I know you're still working on the plan. I think my first comment would probably be that Cohort B that starts two days later and you're asking for remote learning is ridiculous. And I think something else needs to be advised for that, if that is going to be your final plan. Secondly, I keep hearing about professional development in the first 10 days. And so I guess my question is, are you telling me that the bar will be raised and all the teachers will be able to do better than what happened in the spring over 10 days? I mean, there's some teachers that knocked it out of the park without a doubt. There are other teachers who, I mean, they went to school to teach in front of children. They were not taught to teach, you know, on a computer screen or on a little whiteboard that they had at their house or whatnot. So is there going to be that development within those 10 days? And then if that is the development, then what is going to be the evaluation of those teachers throughout the year? Because there needs to be some continuous evaluation to make sure that if this is remote, even if it's every other week, that we're getting to these kids and that they are learning. Because I didn't go to school to teach. So my kid is going to be different than the neighbor's kid and the kid down the street. And so what's the evaluation that that teacher is able to get through to every single one of those kids and well, so that we all get to the next grade level as appropriately as we should have if we were in the classroom? Thank you. Those are my questions, and I am so sorry to interrupt at the end.
I appreciate your feedback. I think the, it's not going to be easy plan for everybody, right? This is, nobody has been here through any of this process. We all, Mr. Madeira talks about he has been in this for many, many years, but in his many, many years, this is something that he has encountered that no one else done before. So while I appreciate the frustration, I think the ridiculous comment is probably not something that we want to lead with. We have to start somewhere in that case. As far as the accountability, that's a big topic of conversation. I think that comes in with the education plan. That comes into it the mindset, as Mr. Madeira said, the state is looking for teachers to be back in the classroom regardless of the model. So the accountability has to be a big part of that aspect of it. You know, we would like to see what those 10 days are, right? And we'll get that plan. I would ask that, as a community, patience is going to have to be a strong word, because I, too, as a parent in this district, very frustrated. And I have shared that frustration with the administration across the board. We can't have what we have in the spring, and that has to change, and that's what we're hearing for.
So I think the comfort level, from my perspective, is the strength of this organization, are the people, are the teachers. It is the teachers, really. The strength of this organization and this school district are the individuals that we're asking to go above and beyond and in a unique circumstance, rise to the occasion. I will give, I think it's important to note, the state recognizes that this is a unique circumstance and built-in, reduced, unheard of, right? Reduced 10 school days with a priority being, this is an additional time for school districts to bring together those individuals, those professionals to be prepared. I don't want to underscore the safety component to this health issue either as well, right? I know we've talked a lot about the educational value, but this model also has to have the necessary safeguards. So those things and those are going to, the protocols, the routines, the traffic flow, there are a lot of routines that we're going to have to work through and fill them all in. I will tell you, for example, our district task force has a couple of doctors that have offered their services in relation to some training at no cost. So we've already reached out with Dr. Koblinsky to some real talented people within our community who said that they would come in, whether it be nurses or doctors, and help prepare our adults for students returning to school. So I'm not certainly at all negating, I hear the passion. It is the appropriate starting point for our kids. And I think we benefit from having the talented people we have and having some additional time to prepare for our kids. I can tell you that my teaching staff and our teachers aren't waiting for those 10 days. I have conversations, and many of them are working now as they prepare for those expectations. I've either volunteered to be on task force, I've been engaged in activities on planning, and I'm taking a look at what's in place. And certainly then now, when we bring in some more expertise, we can do that. So I want people, and it is so important from a transparency perspective, to feel comfortable and confident that we're going to have your children return to us safely with the staff members and do the right thing. And I feel we are doing that, and I feel the committee has supported that tonight. But it is going to be a work in progress. But I'm convinced that our strength are those individuals, and we'll be there. Thanks.
8:53, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Motion in a second. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, no abstention. Thank you.